It does.
We're gathered here for another review of the opportunity to discuss the pension and financing.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I'll start with just a review of the 2011 funding and the analysis we've gone through and Stephen's going to sign off on it is that we need to downsize that outstanding issue by the amount of money that was applied to CERH which is by county count 1.3 million dollars. So the refunding drops in size. The savings as a result of that will be a cash contribution or approximately 250,000 to 255,000 based on interest rates today, both so that you would realize in fiscal year 2017. Now, the qualifier there is that we have in that analysis assumed that you do a pension financing and not because just to allocate cost. So if we combine the tax exempt refinancing with the taxable financing, we do a hundred to save audit, same official statement adding, et cetera, we realize fairly significant economies of scale of issuance costs in the what they call safe harbor allocation of costs we need to accrue radically. So if we do the refunding and pension financing, the funding would constitute only about 10% of the aggregate. And so we've allocated about 10% of the financing costs to the refunding. So it becomes much more efficient in that allocation. In terms of dollars actually saved, it's probably ballpark $40,000 of efficiency if you go providing two financings at one, might be as high as 50. So that's, it's not something that should drive a decision, but certainly it's something we recognize and realize if we can.
And that 1.3 million that comes directly off of principal?
Yeah.
So once that's transferred, then the debt goes down by that.
Yeah, and it's done corradively over the life of the loan. So each year would be reduced by the same amount.
And there's interest savings then, obviously?
Obviously, yes.
That's not included in your numbers, right?
That's correct.
Do you have any idea of that estimation, what the interest would be on that 1.3 million over the life of the loan?
Yeah, so the savings before applying the 1.3 million would have been... 330?
330.
330, yeah. So the savings drop in this particular case to 253,000. So call it 8,000 over the life. Only interest on that 1.3, yeah. So...
But actually, just like any other loan you pay off, you're also saving the total interest on that
That's correct.
1.3 million as well.
Yeah. We haven't reflected that here because you're also spending a lot of money in cash.
Right.
But in terms of your debt...
It's still savings for the county.
Absolutely, yes. So that's the update on the tax exempt for funding. Then to try to tie together the taxable financing, if you elect to fund the unfunded portion of the pension, I tried to summarize this as briefly as I can. And again, we look at this as very simply as is there a less expensive way to finance the unfunded portion? And again, by actual calculation and assumption and formulas, you are funding the unfunded liability at seven and a half percent over 25 years. And if you recall, we had presented a spreadsheet, which is this last page, which shows you what those funding options are. We had received two bank loan proposals, which were pulled to bank in integrity, which is now NCT, and two proposals from underwriters, RBC Royal Bank of Canada and Stiefel Nicholas. The Stiefel Nicholas proposal, albeit not cast in concrete, if you will, produces by a fairly significant number of basis points the best outcome at 3.8% over, this was done over 20 years. So if we went to 25 years, it would be at 4%, with the same relative advantage as the other three proposals. We don't need to decide which one of those vehicles you'd want to use, but I just lay that out for illustration. And again, the benefit over 25 years of financing it at 4% versus seven and a half is about $10.5 million in present value terms. If you looked at allocating 22 million at 65, 35, that would be about 20... 14 million going into the equity market. So when you look at savings of, call it $10.5 million in present value, you're really looking at almost an amount equal to the deposit in the equity fund as being the interest savings over a 25-year period. We had then assumed that you would take $2 million of the current year, 2016 budgeted amount for the unfunded portion of the art and apply that to downsize the issue from 24 to 22 million, which would reduce the obligations in the next, call it, three to four to five years, so that you would have some real budget relief in the near term. And then it would, for a period of about five years, it would be a de minimis amount on the back end. It starts to escalate just because of the way the actuarial assumptions are crafted. Do you know what that budget relief might be? We had looked at 25 years before using the, it would be about $785,000 in fiscal year 17 through 22. So the next, call it, six years. And then it drops to about $400,000 in 2023, which is coincides with the end of your current GEO debt. So if all of the things stayed the same in your budget in 2023, your general fund obligations would drop by the amount of your current GEO debt.
About $2 million.
About $2 million. And then the pickout are the savings from '24 through '27 are about a quarter billion dollars. And then just by a quirk of calculation, there's a year in 2028 where it would actually be a dis-savings or in addition to loss of about $275,000. And it jumps back up starting in 2030 of a million plus a year through 2041. Again, and I'm sorry, I'm just going a little early. The present value savings is about 11.3, not 10.4, one to 25-year financing.
So over the next six years, the budget relief would be 785,000?
Yeah, so...
Per year?
Yeah.
Per year?
Per year, yes.
How many mills? What fraction? What mill is that, 700?
So if you combined in 2017 and 786 with the projected, call it, 150 associated with refunding of the 2011 bond, it would be close to a million dollars of debt service relief in 2017.
And it'll be 10 million.
So the round number is 10.000. That's a, that's close to the elevator version, so I'll stop there. Take a breath. And if you have questions or want to look at it a little differently, we can do that. Nothing, very little has changed in the marketplace. Ten years still around, 1.5. So should affect any proposal we've received. If you want to proceed, then we need to determine whether we do a bank loan or a capital markets transaction. The benefit of the bank loan is it's known, we could literally pass an ordinance next week and be on our way to closing. We still need to do the tax exempt refinancing. And if we did a bank loan and a bond issue, they would be two separate transactions. So that 50,000 we talked about earlier can go away. I think the best strategy would be to combine them, a taxable and a tax exempt, come back with an ordinance to approve both, go through the rating process, get bond insurance for both financings. And over that timeframe, we can work through what underwriter you want to use and try to better pin them down on exactly where they're willing to commit to selling bonds in the marketplace. And you can use both. You can split it and say we're going to use both. There's no magic answer, I think, to, I'm sure Liz is concerned. At the last meeting, you want same firm issuing debt that manages your assets. While we don't see it as a conflict, it's certainly an issue. If you give it as a conflict, we can do it back.
So we're still in the $11 million savings. We have an opportunity maybe to address in the next five years or so some decrease in taxes or fund some of the unfunded priorities that we have on the table.
That's correct, yes.
And I guess it's philosophical. We'll go back to that board. Whether or not we consider this a debt that is owed, soft versus hard, and also, you know, and I put that to our controller and our treasurer, how they view this 24 million in pension debt or obligation. Do you consider it? I'm sure if I'm a pensioner, I would hope that you'd be considering it.
You would hope the answer is it's a hard cost.
Yeah, exactly. So that's where I'm a little bit, I'm not gray on it at all, but what do you...
It's a hard cost, in my opinion. I think it's an obligation. There's no way around it. And if we don't do something either through this process or continuing to pay the way we pay now, we're just continuing to kick it down the road. And someday it'll get, become more unmanageable than it is now. Yeah, we view it, you certainly have a contract with your retired employees and current employees to fund their retirement benefits. That is an absolute hard cost. So to suggest that the way you fund that is optional is a little bit of a stretch of logic. But clearly, you are not contractually bound and funded on a year-over-year basis by what works hard. You have an obligation to fund it.
So you have thoughts?
Well, I just think too, if you don't do something now or in the near future, it's just a cash back player. And maybe the interest rates and things don't be as good in the future. I mean, even though they keep saying they're rolling up, it just never goes.
That's the part I'm looking at, as I would in a household situation with a mortgage. If you can refinance from seven and a half to four or whatever, 3.8, you'd be saying to yourself, why wouldn't I do that?
If someone wanted to see you go back to the way they expect them to be.
But that's what's, you know, being thought about, is it considered this obligation as a hard debt? And I certainly do. But I wanted you to back us up. If we're going in the wrong direction in that thinking, that it really is optional, or you know, that that's kind of what gets you in trouble, you know, if you go in the optional direction.
Yeah. And the next step on our side would be then to make sure we've nailed down a confirmation that your reimbursement is not provided by the, by funding the unfunded liability. I asked Bob earlier today, and he was trying to, just so quick to notice, but of your 2016 argument, 2.86 million, the estimate is that about 1.1 billion is reimbursed by the Commonwealth. So those are significant dollars that we would not want to lose. Now, if you fund it, clearly your normal cost is subject to reimbursement. So the reimbursement in question here in the unfunded portion is about 850,000, $845,000 in 2016. So, you know, again, it wouldn't make any sense to say 785,000 to give up the reimbursement. So I would want to make sure we have a confirmation of that.
But what you've seen in other counties and have done it is that they...
Yeah. Now, I do know that Berks does not do it. And I have no idea why they didn't go through the process of determining that. And we were not their financial advisor. I just know that they did a pension financing. And they, to the best of my knowledge, because I know they're struggling with now, is they don't get reimbursement as if they had not. And I wasn't any part of that process, so I don't know, you know, what part of it they failed to investigate, confirm, or whatever. I just don't know.
It's choice not to.
Well, that could be. And they just decided it wasn't that important. But I just...
That's what they did. I think they just decided.
And I can't imagine it's not a meaningful number. I mean...
Well, it would have to be the borrow of 60 million.
Right, exactly. It's not an insignificant number. And the makeup of counties, it's the same agencies in every county. So, you know, if their allocation from agency to agency is much different than yours, I would be stunned.
Colleagues, any thoughts, comments?
Jay, why the 25 years opposed to the 20?
Well, if we go with 20, it's harder to create savings in the next several years. And the lion's share of the savings would all occur in the last five years when you have zero obligation on the debt versus 2.8 million along the unfunded amortization. And so you're really creating a very back-ended benefit. And so it would be, again, going back to the mortgage, you would be like saying, well, I can reduce my rate, but I'm just going to reduce the rate and shorten the loan so that my payments stay the same. So again, we can go back to the 20-year structure. The present value savings don't change a lot, but it's all very back-ended. And I just thought that, you know, creating a benefit in years 21 through 25 was a bit lopsided in the analysis. But there's no magic to this.
Relief under that model, would it be?
It would be harder to create any meaningful benefit in the next five to six years because we're really front-loaded in the form of a school.
The bottom line for me is it increases our risk, and I'm not in favor of doing that.
Did you collaborate?
I think I've elaborated week after week. So either I was heard or I wasn't. And I have all the information if you would like to read it.
Or the state?
So I guess at this point, obviously, this isn't a meeting where you take any action. But now that everything that can be presented has been presented, I think that Jay and I need to know if you want the process to start to bring things forth for action on this or not. I think it's definitely proceeding on the 2011 refunding that's happened. And you've already approved that. What we would do is come back with a new ordinance that would combine the two financings together so that we could, you can realize the efficiency of the financing costs. You could approve this subject to confirming the Commonwealth reimbursement. We certainly would not get back to you until we have that confirmed. I think that's a meaningful piece. But until you tell us you want to do it, I didn't want to go consume Commonwealth labor on a question that was more theoretical.
When we take out bond issues, they are for specific things. And one that I can only recall the easiest is a million dollars to build a 911 center. And by combining these, and, you know, they just keep rolling over, are those original obligations still in place?
One debt?
Yes.
Well, it's like refinancing your mortgage. So yes, in that you still have an obligation. It's different in that it's a new obligation, but it's going to be called a 2016 general obligation bond. But the purpose of the original financing doesn't change. And the allocation internally of what debt is applied to would not change.
I think another way to address that is that is, are the tangibles that the debt was issued for still collateral?
Still, right.
That's a good way.
Oh, well.
For example, you, you know, we can't borrow, we can't take a 20-year obligation to go out and acquire, you know, 100 vehicles
Right.
that in four years are not going to be here any longer.
Yeah.
So that's, is that closer to your question?
Yeah. I just, I just see all this money getting bundled into one, and the purpose of the original borrowing lost in all of the transactions, totally forgotten.
Yeah. So there's a clear trail, and in particular, in this...
Will a list be formulated so that everyone knows what's within those, that one? Now I can go back and pull up the old bond issues. If you put it into one, everything's real fuzzy. What's paid off? What's not? I don't know.
Well, the 2011, I think, refinanced prior issues. That was not new money. I don't remember.
It was Honeywell. No, it was Honeywell. It was Honeywell. So it's all Honeywell.
So there's always, there's always a trail.
Tangibles.
There's always a trail of what was financed, because we need to comply with all the IRS regulations or what you can and cannot do. So there's always an audited trail of what was financed, when it was financed, when it was refinanced, how it was refinanced, whether or not it constituted an advance refunding or a current refunding under the Internal Revenue Code. So that trail exists. In this particular case, there would be a standalone tax exempt for keys of representation, Series A. They would be nothing more than the debt service to refinance in 2011, those are bonds. And then there would be a Series B that would be designated taxable pension obligation bond. So there would be a clear representation and trail of what that financing is from the very first day. But there is a running record of all this, mostly to comply with federal law, but to some extent comply with state law as well.
So DCED wouldn't approve the financing unless that trail is there to exist?
Well, DCED doesn't necessarily look at the underlying project. What they look at is that you comply with all the parameters of the debt act that in the aggregate you have level where descending debt, that the yields are ascending, that you have a, you know, that there's an ordinance properly adopted, that the ordinance outlines what the project is. It really is bond council's job to make sure that you have complied with stated federal laws. So they look at what is the project or financing, what's the appreciable or useful life of that asset, what's the life of the debt compared to the asset life? Have we done all the proper advertisements? Has it been duly enacted? And what's their official statement? All of those things between our firm and bond council collectively are done to make sure you comply with all stated federal laws.
I guess I'm looking for a clearer list for the county commissioners. One bond might be paid off next year and another bond paid off five years from now. So which bonds, you know, as we pay back on this bigger bond, how do I know what the money's for? It's very...
Well, you don't have a lot of debt outstanding. So it'd be very easy for us to create a very straightforward spreadsheet that showed you principal and interest due each year to the end of each loan. And at the bottom, we can give you a description of what that outstanding issue has done. So if they refinanced it, in this case, the 2011 Honeywell project, it'd just be a little text box that says 2016 bonds refinanced, 2011 energy project under Honeywell. So if that's the kind of cheat sheet you're looking for, we can do that very decently.
It's all contained in the ordinance, isn't it?
It's in the ordinance, and we actually do present to DCED that kind of schedule, but not as much detail on that page as to what the projects are.
I just think it's important that we don't lose sight of what we borrowed money for and how it was spent, if it ever gets spent for the purpose it was intended. I want to make sure that doesn't get lost.
Well, to the extent money was borrowed and not spent on the project that was described and included in the ordinance, that's a whole other issue. We would hope that all of that was done.
And we'd take that money and put it in the pension.
Well, yeah, and that would be, yeah, I mean, that would be a direct deposit into the pension plan upon closing. Now, whether or not it's invested in equities or fixed income or real estate, that's a whole other decision. But the day you impose on the pension financing, the money would immediately be transferred to the pension account. So it would be there forever and a day. So with respect to the pension, once money goes into that pension plan, you cannot, under any set of facts, take it out for your own benefit. It can only be distributed for benefit of retirees, benefits, benefit payments. So that money clearly, once it is borrowed and deposited in the pension plan, that's like putting it in a safe that never comes out from a commissioner's perspective.
Just a couple, well, I would just, for clarification, we're only refinancing the 2011 bond issue, which was for the Honeywell.
That's correct, yeah.
So it's not mixed with any other, any other bond issue?
Yeah. And in this one, because one's pension with a very clear use in their taxable bonds, it's, there's, it's kind of the easiest case of clear delineation between one series of bonds and the other. I mean, the other option would be to go ahead and do the refunding now and wait, you know, four weeks or six weeks or whatever, do the pension financing. And then we're into two ratings, two legal fees. Everything is done. We just would prefer not to pay extra just for that kind of clear distinction. I think we've created a very clear distinction and separation of borrowed monies and application of those funds without duplicating costs.
Mr. Controller, do you have any comment on that?
Well, I think that sounds like a, so I'm headed in a direction to go.
Part of my thinking on this is the fact that we would be holding our feet to the fire, if you will, on this debt, on this pension money that we're saying. We are obligated to pay this bond.
Absolutely.
And so that gives everyone, in terms of your employees, future pensioners and pensioners, the idea that we are taking care of them as we are obligated to. So I think there is no vice in doing what we're doing. If you're doing it for that purpose of it's something that you owe, and you want to make sure it's going to be addressed and paid and not put off for a year or passed on or, you know, whatever. So I think that's a good thing that would be obligating us to for the next 25 years. Also, the savings of 11 million cannot be ignored with the rates the way they are and what we're paying, or, you know, what it's based on now and what we'd be going through. And also, the potential for either funding something that we would not have an ability to as a, that's a priority that we know we have to take care of, but it's unfunded. This would give us some cash for that or give us an opportunity to reduce mileage in the next four, five, six years, so.
Yeah. And what drops out in your general fund budget are fungible dollars. So there's no, just because you save money related to debt, there's no restriction on how you deal with those savings.
So I'd like to proceed, but I do want to have the assurance that the reimbursement...
Absolutely.
That has to be for burners.
Yes. And again, I think I've said this many times, without confirmation, if we do not lose reimbursement, we would not be comfortable proceeding. I think reimbursement is too big a number for any county to, we'll just surrender it.
Yes.
There's one other thing. You talking about us doing this. I don't know what the state's doing. You know, there's a whole bunch of things, pensions up there, particularly county pensions. If it comes to a point where they decide the county defined benefit pension plan ends and are going to define contribution, you're going to have to put that money in, right? Why? Because if they change it, they're going to have to fully fund defined benefit and benefit.
So you're saying that would cause everyone to have a 100% funded plan rather than...
Correct.
That's the way it would ask. That's the way we're hearing if that, the people are proposing, that they would make the defined benefit plan fully funded. Going forward, it'd be defined contribution. So the defined benefit would have to be full.
For new employees, new hires?
Right.
So that, and that is part of their package of any, you know, equation that I've seen includes that going forward.
I don't see that happening like tomorrow. But I've heard there's about nine bills concerning county pensions.
And you don't think if that was the case, the state wouldn't have a pool of money that you would borrow from them at zero or one or two percent interest?
No. I do not see them, I do not see them helping, helping the counties at all in that case, not at all.
The Commonwealth will have the same issue. I'm assuming it would go from Commonwealth level down to the Southern governmental entity level. Their number's staggering. You just handle...
Much more than ours.
Yeah, it's a big number.
I would be stunned if there was a less than market rate, cooler funds available, and get them where rates are. I think their argument is going to be, you know, on his cheek, go take care of them. So if that were the case, it would become essentially a balloon payment for everyone on the absolute likely.
I recognize there is some additional risk to the county by doing this. However, as has been pointed out, we have in excess of 100 million in fund now that's out there on the street and is vulnerable to the market. So, you know, what would our backup plan be if that was devastated or crushed? Obviously, there is none, except we would have to pay more money. I think I'm very concerned about, I recognize that there are, quote, some unfunded projects looming out there. But I'm very interested in giving our taxpayers some relief. So, you know, there are two inviting things as far as this proposal for me. One is 11 million dollars in savings, which is obviously, if everything goes well. It's not as obvious as refinancing your whole mortgage. And also, the possibility of some relief for the taxpayers, because I voted to increase the taxes significantly, because that was part of what I felt we needed to do to right the situation that accumulated over a decade probably. And it fell on the shoulders of this board to rectify the things that had happened over a long, long time. And it's not an easy position to be in, and it's not an easy decision for any of us to make. But I have to, I have to, you're telling us that the 11 million dollars in savings is there. No, I look... You know, I looked at the tables that you provided, and it's, these actuaries have, really have some cumbersome ways of calculating things because how you can go along with a savings of a few hundred thousand dollars and then all of a sudden you have to pay out a significant, it just doesn't make sense to me, I can't calculate that. But I really want to be able, for the 2017 budget, to lower that tax obligation. If I can't have that happen, I really would not want to do this. That's where I am, that's the final motivating factor for me.
Again, you know, assuming, you know, we get in and out of the market on both the taxes and for the taxable financings that raise through the city here based on representation from underwriters, your reduction of pension slash debt service in 2017 should be about a million dollars. So that's, I think that's a number you can at least use conversationally as you think through this process. That should not change by much, and I mean, we just don't see much in the market that's gonna change quickly if we pursue this. And frankly, if, you know, we got to the day where we're supposed to win market and there was a significant change in rate of interest rates and other assumptions, and the outcome wasn't what we thought it was gonna be, I would be here to proceed.
If I may, just try one more time to put this as succinctly as I can. Cedar Haven was sold to write the pension plan. The taxes were raised partially to write the pension plan. Now, there's a new aspect to loan money to write the pension plan. And the people are saying, when is it gonna end? The level of trust is small. A carrot has been dangled, well, maybe we can reduce your taxes next year by, if I'm hearing right, maybe one mil at the most.
No, not one mil.
If he said a tenth of a mil. But the point is, it's not absolute, and I don't, I think people are gonna hold your feet to the fire to do that. You're taking an awfully big risk, and I don't think you should do that.
What do you mean by the people are gonna hold my feet to the fire to do that?
Because the carrot has been dangled, we'd like to reduce the taxes.
You've dangled the carrot, essentially.
I didn't say that.
I said that it's something that I would look at.
And so did Commissioner Phillips, so I heard it from both of you, and I just feel that our people are held to the fire.
Well, we had to defend ourselves since you brought the entire Democratic committee into our meeting.
I didn't, I didn't...
No, I know you didn't, Commissioner Phillips, I know. I know your modus operandi, okay? Everything is political for you. For me, it's about the county and writing the situation, it's not political. I'm not gonna run for governor or state senate. I'm perfectly content being a county commissioner, and I want to do the best job that I can as a county commissioner.
This isn't dangling carrots, this is about trying to do the best thing at any given time with what we dealt and/or what the opportunities are. So I don't, I'm not looking at this as trying to, you know, throw a bad direction, but the pension obligation was pretty severe, and all the things you mentioned were partial things in the right direction, which we have tried to address. So this is to be the final phase of that addressing of the pension deficit. So I don't see how this is misleading to the public that we're just, you know, dragging them along through. Otherwise, you know, I certainly wouldn't be party to it.
I don't ever remember any of this discussion when the sale of Cedar Haven was on the table. It just keeps getting added to.
Well, and how would this be discussed during the sale of Cedar Haven?
If I might add, the sale of Cedar Haven was done with the primary motivation of eliminating the general fund support slash contribution to Cedar Haven, which was running several million dollars a year. The pension cost was a separate line item in all of that calculation. So if I remember correctly, we were up to about $4 million a year subsidizing Cedar Haven operations and capital. So the sale of it, one, eliminated the need to subsidize it. Two, created a pot of money that would use in part to fund 2014, well, in whole, 2014 and 2015 marks, as well as deposit 10 million into the plan to raise the funding level from 70, 80 percent to 80, 90 percent, or wherever we are today. So the $24 million unfunded liability that we're talking about today really is 10 million less than it would have been if you had not taken $10 million now to proceed from the sale of Cedar Haven line.
And I respectfully disagree. The subsidization of Cedar Haven could have been eliminated simply by having the same company, and they just... That would have never made up though for the money that we've already put into Cedar Haven if we'd have never seen it?
Well, there's a whole, a whole bunch of issues that, you know, we would have had to lay off 10% of the workforce and all those things under, it would just, and it would have given us a couple more years, but under a very stressful and we'd be back at the time the market was right for maximizing the sale price per bed. So there's a lot, a lot more, it's not as simple as just the, we could have avoided. And we have taken a lot of steps in a solvency, a direction of securing our finances, and I can't imagine where we would be if we had not taken those steps. So I'm sorry, I disagree with your revisionist history on that, my recollection of that. The facts speak for themselves.
So at this point, should Jay proceed with the preparations of bringing this forth for action? Are there, I mean, obviously there are some, what kind of costs are associated directly with pursuing this? But having a little more concrete...
Still no cost on our side because we don't charge a fee on this pension financing unless we get to a pension financing. So we're working on purely a pension fee basis. The only other fee that would be of any concept, well, maybe to, if we proceed with a rating, we're gonna get a rating on essentially, oh, 25 million debt outstanding. And the rating agency fees are based on the amount of money you borrow. So if we were doing just the taxes, that refinancing, we'll pick numbers for illustration, maybe the rating fee's $8,000. If we do it on 25 million, the rating fee might be $20,000. We would expect to have an answer on the reimbursement issue before we go to the rating agency because that would be part of our presentation. So I don't think the rating fee is at risk by any meaningful degree or amount of dollars. The other fee that might be slightly higher and not any benefit for would be the legal fee because we would have, bond council would start working on two financings under one heading if you'd won a transaction. So there'd be an ordinance, we have to develop some documents. They had given me a fee of 35,000 to do both, and 25,000 to do just the taxes and financing. So the hiccupry cost of doing both is $10,000. If we were to separate them, it would really be about 25,000 for one and probably 30,000 for the other. So we look at that in the aggregate, it's your saving 15, 20,000. But if we go through the process and in the end we don't issue taxable bonds, there are probably some time that they would expect to be paid for, so, you know, let's call it 5,000 to 10,000. So, you know, round trip, you know, maybe 15,000 is at risk from a professional fee slash rating agency. Again, our agreement with you in writing is if the financing doesn't happen, we don't get paid. We brought this idea to you, we don't expect to get paid for something that we brought to you that never comes to fruition. And, you know, you don't pay your solicitor for financings. The other fees, the paying agent, the training, all of those are in the backend, they're relatively modest fees, a hundred thousand dollars. So we don't see, I don't see us putting you at risk for spending a professional fee dollar or something that we can't give for the inclusion.
Would any of that, though, take place prior to taking action or anything? Well, we need an action to commence any of that.
Yeah, well, we're gonna create another ordinance, so that's the action, that's how it's always the ordinance. So there's a little bit of legal time there, we've already adopted one ordinance for the taxes and financing, we're essentially gonna replace that with two financings in the ordinance. But again, it's not meaningful financial dollars, and that'll be just speaking on their behalf, but from experience, it's not a meaningful cost just to grant the ordinance, particularly if you have a great path to the section. There is another advertisement, that's correct. I don't know what the local ad, and I know some papers are relatively expensive, it's a few hundred dollars. Yeah, so it's, there's some papers that are...
John will get us those special, he enjoys the meetings. I did have another comment, but being under stress, I forgot what it was. Oh, I know what it was. And between Jamie and the controller and Treasury, the reimbursement that we're now getting because we funded the pension fund and the meeting card, which we didn't get before, which is also something that we can calculate in as putting us at risk and money lost forever due to not funding the pension for the time that we did. But is that reimbursement calculated in the 2016 budget, or is it, is it part of the budget?
Yes, and in total, that's about 1.15.
Right, it's significant.
It is very significant, and again, that's why we might not want to proceed without understanding the surety is that it's about just short of 40%. Yeah, so on the unfunded portion, it would be, you know, the same allocation, the unfunded portion of your total worth is about 73%. So we, in easy math, I took 73% of the 1.15, came up with 845,000, which is the money that we're talking about at risk from reimbursement. So instead of otherwise, if you, if you finance the pension, and, you know, we could not get reimbursement on the unfunded portion, you would still receive reimbursement on your normal cost contribution. So it's not all at risk, but it's a significant percentage of it.
Who provides the assurance that isn't in writing?
We had it in writing years ago, so we just have to go back and make sure that they're still willing to honor DPW. And we would go back and...
A human service, DHS.
DHS, sorry.
You stay current, I...
And we had met with, I don't know, five, six people, finally got asked to somebody who had the authority to say yay or nay. So, you know, it's probably not one phone call process again, but I think it's very important to get the bottom.
Well, I, just for clarity's sake, I would be happy to work to fund it to the 100%, take the savings of the 11 million and take the, you know, the next four or five years, whatever that would be, starting next year and deal with it as a tax decrease rather than, you know, unfunded priorities as I, you know, we could do either. But I would, I would say, I'll take off the table of the unfunded priorities and say, let's do some tax decreasing for the sake of the taxpayer, for the savings.
I know it's hard to project, but again, the professionals in the room, there's a heck of a lot of building going on in the county. Do we have any idea of increased tax numbers, the...
I think that's something Dan would have to answer you to.
And he doesn't really know until closer to budget time where he can take the new, the added values.
Yeah, the added value.
I mean, if you looked at maybe planning department, if you look at what kinds of, what's in their, you know, their future permits that are issued maybe already?
Yeah, I know.
That would be the, you know, but...
It's not on residential level.
I can't always say, I mean, we just did spring interim bills, it wasn't a tremendous amount of extra money, but we did do interim bills.
Sort of something until the budget. That's all I have for today. I thought it was enough. So to proceed, is that right?
Yeah.
Prepare them, proceed. Today is the 18th, thank you. I mean, it's tomorrow, but, yeah, we did, we did advertise, yeah. Okay, then we will start tomorrow with the right person, the Commonwealth. As well, start on our side the documents to start the credit process with rating agency. I'll talk to Stevens and Lee just to let them know what direction we're going, and then we'll go back and meet together in different private appointments. But I'll try to keep them on a slow heater just in the ordinance until we get to the Commonwealth reimbursement issue. The, so the next, the next workshop I have scheduled, or any issue so to speak, is the 24th. I have it in my book for now, anyway, to get back together and have another discussion on the day recording. Just trying to come to some consensus agreement, you know, we have another discussion on those presentations and proposals and hopefully move toward a decision first.
Is that, are we just going, just going to be the commissioners, or are we going to have folks from probation and...
The hours here, the judge, it's on the judge's schedule.
Okay, all right.
He brings them to the folks I sit with.
Right.
Jimmy, one issue we discussed that would need to be included in the private resources is, we want a bank loan, capital markets transaction, we want a capital markets transaction, which firm do we want to use?
No.
And we don't, I don't need that decision today, but again, in our analysis, the capital markets transaction is significantly better. If you would like, we can go back to both and ask them for kind of a final dress up and see what the result is, and then make a decision.
I would say go back to them because it's not gonna get any worse, it can only get better.
We would think that the pension will be a sharper, yes.
I feel differently about that.
Okay, so we'll ask them for their best market assessment and estimation of rates.
Yeah, and like you said, the bank loans, you know, it had some certainty at the beginning, but there were variables toward the end.
Yeah, and particularly stretching it to 25 years, I mean, they gave us a cap of five and three quarters. So you run the risk that from year eight through 25, it's always five and three quarters. Now, in there, we could refinance at any time, but who knows where rates are gonna be? The capital markets transactions would have a 10-year call, so you would have fixed debt for 10 years, you could refinance thereafter. It just seems to be, and I was a bit surprised by it, but it is, the capital markets is a better transaction.
And I think there's, you know, a little competition going on there too.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so let me get that dressed up and report back also.
Okay, all right, nothing else?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your time. Jimmy, if I can, so we will help insurance carry on. I have something scheduled for next Wednesday, if you guys have time, right here. You gave me a note about being at all, but we're still going to be here on the 10th.
Yes, 10th and the afternoon.
Right, right after?
Yeah.
Right after the 10th.
I'm leaving the next day again, but I, I mean, the issue will be being back here in time for the meeting probably. I don't know what the drive is of the...
About two hours, okay, about two hours.
I think the session on Wednesday is over at 11:30 or something like that, I believe.
Yeah, wraps up, we're out of here. Short agenda tomorrow as well. John Wilson's coming up with a few things, I have a TV things to let through, otherwise, very brief. You have a session with Shell 1015.